This is the Acushnet Planning Board. Today is May 11th, 2023. The time is 6:37. This meeting is being viewed live on cable, recorded for future viewing via YouTube, and we are also on Zoom tonight. Can I get a motion to open the planning board meeting?
A motion that we open the planning board meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can we all please introduce ourselves to the people out?
Steve Boucher, member.
Dave DeViggen, member.
Mark Francois, chairman.
Rick Ellis, vice chairman.
Ryan DeChamps, member.
Okay, next is minutes. Did everybody get the opportunity to review the April 2023 minutes? We were all in attendance. Any questions, issues, comments? Can I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes from April 20, 2023?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, there's no correspondence. Can I get a motion to open the public portion of this meeting?
Motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing. The proponent requests a continuance to the scheduled planning board meeting on May 25th, 2023. Site plan review and solar special permit modification. To process a modification for a site plan review and a special permit for a 7.5 megawatt solar array proposed by Syncarreford Park Drive LLC. The engineers Weston and Sampson. The plans and accompanying documentation are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, firing ways building, 130 Main Street, first floor during regular business hours. The proponent wasn't ready. They basically asked for continuation to the next May 25th meeting. Just a little insight, they did file an NOI for Lambert Street. So the conservation board did get an NOI for Lambert Street. So it looks like they're going forward with Lambert Street for the meantime. Besides that, I have nothing new to report regarding that.
So they haven't submitted a copy of that plan to us?
They have not submitted anything to us.
I would like to communicate to the proponent that we would like hard copies of the plans at least, at least five days before the meeting.
It will be at least a week. If the meetings are on a Thursday, they will be there the following Thursday.
Okay. I mean, that's, that's fine. I need, I need plans to look at that I can mark up and
I agree.
Go through. There's no way I can look at 40, 30 by 42 plans in 20 minutes or less and, and do a review justice.
Agreed. We'll do it. I see people out in the audience. Is there anybody here regarding Park Drives in Carrefour that would like to ask any questions or anything?
I'm here, listening.
Okay.
They answered my question. The plan, the new plan has to be submitted five to seven days before the 25th meeting.
Yes, yes. I, I mean, like I said, they just started with Conservation. That's going to be a process in itself. Very good possibility that the 25th will be continued. Just keep an eye on the posted minute, meeting minutes and, or reach out to the planning board and ask any questions. But it's a good possibility it might get continued again.
Well, you should be able to get those plans from Conservation tomorrow. If they file, they're available to the general public.
Yep.
By PDF, you should be able to get a hard copy.
I went to the town today and asked Pam if any new plans had been submitted and she said no.
They're not required to file plans with the town clerk for a Conservation Commission filing.
Okay.
Only Conservation directly.
So I go to Conservation directly?
Yep. Pat Hannan's the agent.
I'm sorry?
Pat, Patrick Hannan is the agent.
Okay.
And Joanne's the secretary. Get either one of them on the phone and you should be able to get copies through them.
Okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to close the public portion of this?
Before we do that?
Did they have, did they?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did they have a time that they wanted to get the plans for us?
I have not heard anything.
Okay, then I'll just stand with my statement that we need, I need a, I need a set of those hard copied plans at least five days.
I think, I think it's, I think it has to begin by our rules the Friday before, so at least by Friday. I like to, if our meetings are on Thursday, I'd like them having by the previous Thursday.
Absolutely. I mean, I did stop in Tuesday.
That has to be stamped, don't it?
That has to be stamped.
That has to be stamped over town clerk. When they file plans with us, that has to be with Pam.
Right, so if there's no plan stamped by next Friday, there's no meeting next, the 25th. Can I get a motion?
Motion to continue the public hearing to May 25th per the request of the applicant.
So moved. Or second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to close the public portion of this hearing?
Motion to close.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry. Thank you.
Oh.
I'll get it down eventually.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you. Why do we all call two? All right, let's move on. Number three, we got discussion on other topics. Real business here. A and R, A and R 2023 dash 06. For land on 145 Mendel Road, Cushing, Mass. American Land Surveyors, Fairhaven, Mass. Drawn for Robert and Harriet Holland, 141 Mendel Road, Acushnet, Mass, 02743. The purpose of this plan is to divide parcel 25, creating a new parcel A. I have plans here that we ought to look at. Is there Mr. Russ Firth? In the audience.
Good evening. Name is Russell Firth, American Land Surveyors. Presenting simple subdivision of parcel in the vicinity of 145 Mendel Road.
Well, it's just quite simple. Subdividing a piece of property 250 feet square off of Mendel Road, the easterly side of Mendel Road in the vicinity of number 145 Mendel Road. Mr. Holland is looking to cut off a lot for his daughter to build a home. Simple home site. Is there any wetlands on that lot?
No.
Okay. Is this where the strawberry bomb is? That just property, no?
No, it's kind, it's sort of across the street. The fire tower.
Yeah, kind of, there's a, I think they already had an old foundation or something.
Oh, the old foundation.
There's the foundation, you see it on the plan.
Oh, it's on the plan?
Yes. It's just a foundation.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, do it.
What do you see?
It's right there.
Oh, oh, there.
Yeah, originally I thought it was down. I thought it was down further until I saw Holland.
I wouldn't have it, I wouldn't have.
So, Flat 9 Lot 25B is part of this as well? It's not here?
Where is he?
It's the original lot that we're copying a piece out, right?
There's no, there's no buildings on this lot, right?
Flat 9 Lot 25.
25B has a house on it, correct?
25B has a house on it that's, that's being left alone.
In this, in this parcel?
That's just for orientation purposes.
There's no, there's no buildings on this parcel at all?
On this parcel is vacant.
Oh, the foundation, that's, yeah, it's just a slab, kind of old building.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No, this is about as straightforward a formay as I think we've had in 10 years, so. The area is there, there's no wetlands, it's not in oddball shape, it's, uh,
good to go.
I would make a motion that we plan as submitted.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
We'll sign the Mylar and give that to you. Sign it small. We'll get Steve all the paper copies of this going on, so. Yeah, so we still got. I guess at some point, probably gonna cut it at some point. I don't know, walk, yeah. Just looking at the, I got left out, isn't he saying? Yeah.
Can I get your paper copies, gentlemen?
Five, 12?
Five, 11.
No, 11.
About more than five.
Supposed to be nine. Where the nine go, who knows? It's been used to block the sun.
Well, actually, I have Paul fill out a I fill out a paper, I fill out a charter every time. Well, now what they do is that after I get it to them.
One is yours.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
That was penguins.
Good try.
Thank you.
I was actually gonna bring that up as a topic of discussion in a future meeting is why nine? We only have five departments that it goes to. So I was wondering why we should maybe modify the nine to, let's say, six.
One extra, one extra. One for good vision.
She's still helping, yeah.
What do we have for meetings in June? Are those, are those set up already?
Yeah, on the schedule. I'm sure there are yours.
I think he did it for the year, I think, yeah.
Me the second and fourth.
I probably will, I certainly won't make the first meeting in June. Maybe the second one, I'm not sure.
Where you going?
Going on a motorcycle ride to Southeastern Ohio to ride the windy nine.
Well, okay, moving on real quick. The next four are the Navison Solar Project for Cushing Lane, Robinson Road, 1050 Main Street, and 1052 Main Street. Couple of hours ago, I received an email with a request to continue to the next meeting, the May 25th meeting. A little discussion about what's been happening. Some of you have been driving by and seen what's going on out there. They haven't done anything with 1050 Main as far as the request for, I mean, we got plans on 1050, we got, we got plans on the other three returned, but nothing on 1050 regarding the entry road. So I know nothing about that one and I don't think there's anything going on with that one. Cushing Lane, I had an abutter come in and I spoke with an abutter and Mr. Kudo. So basically, he's telling me that Cushing Lane ends, Cushing Lane is 1,800 feet long. Cushing Lane ends where his property begins. And then there's approximately 150, let's say 150, 200 feet of private drive that goes to his, I think it's his uncle's house. I'm not 100% sure, across the street. And he's saying that that's a private way. And that's what Cushing, that's what Next Am is using to get to Cushing Lane. I sent an email to Mr. Jack Curry and their lawyer, John Markey, asking for proof that they have access to their property line over that 150 to 200, approximately 200 feet of private way. I haven't heard anything about that. So that's an issue that's up in the air right now. Also, Navis, Next Am decided to go out and start laying, what are they called, those railroad ties that they use for heavy machinery to go over?
A mat.
A mat, okay.
They'll call them swamp mats.
Swamp mats. They started putting down the swamp mats over Cushing to get to 1052. They didn't have approval from us on the plans yet and they didn't have approval from Conservation to move forward with that yet. So that's an issue. And there's all kinds of erosion control that was put in incorrectly, self fences put in backwards, straw waddles not doing what they're supposed to be doing. So they have an issue with Conservation. I'm assuming that's why they asked for continuance tonight. So, can I get a motion to continue the four Next Am projects to the May 25th meeting?
Can I just?
Please.
So would 1052 have the same right of way problem getting to that property as the end?
Yes.
They probably have, I shouldn't go too far into this, but they probably have more of an issue than the end.
Than the end does.
Because their parcel goes from Main Street to there and they might not have.
They might not have any way to get over to there.
Anyway, yeah, which is never, I don't know. Buy somebody beginning, but, you know.
It's, it's something that they're gonna have to come on us and show that they have access from point A to point B.
So like the net access thing, I just, I just wondered how it got this far because I mean, our plans have been, day one have shown Cushing Lane to be literally extended
Right.
down over there. So I just, I'm just kind of curious how it gets this far along without, in them, you know, this coming up.
Well, the road, my, when you look at the plan set, the road extension was for the White's family to get to theirs.
And they have three house lots, they requested three house lots.
Yeah, right, that was the purpose. So that's how it started and then it evolved into solar.
Okay.
And I think, you know, there might, I don't know.
No, well, obviously, that's, it's kind of one of how that whole extension got, got started over there.
Yeah.
I mean, I know, I, I know it's got a, you know, inclination was going on going, making a corner over there, that's a, that's kind of a different thing. But now he's claiming that basically that's not even Cushing Lane there from where that, he put that stop sign up to where they are, so.
Again, that's, that's something that an abutter brought up to us.
All you're doing is filling us in.
I'm just filling in, yeah.
When I have an hearing.
No, no, we're just, I'm just filling you in on discussions that have happened with me that you should be aware of.
Okay. I'll make the motion to extend, I mean, yeah, continue the public hearing for Next Am Cushing Lane, Next Am Robinson Road, Next Am 1050 Main Street, and Next Am 1052 to, did they request specifically the May 25th meeting?
They did.
To the May 25th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Okay, the rights to utilize private ways probably one of the most litigated issues in land court and Superior Court in, in Massachusetts. It's, a lot of these things go back to almost King's Grants sometime and it's, it's, it's a, it's a difficult, sticky situation.
Again, and that might fall out of our jurisdiction. We're not here to say yes or no. That might end up with attorneys.
Oh, absolutely. But I, I think at the very least, they should, I mean, especially on projects of this size, they, they need to get their attorney to some, provide something to us to demonstrate that they have the right to access, you know, along any of the older ways that, that they're utilizing. You know, like I said, Lake, Lake Street, Keane Road, those are not accepted town roads, believe it or not. And there's quite a number of other roads like that in town. So just because it's not an accepted town road doesn't mean that people don't have the right to use it. And, and again, it can get quite contorted as to who has what rights. Add to the confusion, if you buy a lot along a road that's not accepted by the town, even though the deed reads, or even though the leaps and bounds description does not show the way, you own by the line of the street, which the courts in Massachusetts have deemed to be the center line of the street. On all of the older subdivisions that, oh, like on the north end of town, you might have a bunch of paper streets there. Somebody owns a lot up here. The only way to get to the lot is to go along these bunch of paper streets out to Lake Street, which is still not accepted. The courts have said that the guy that's way back, way back in the corner has the right to use those ways to access his property and to construct utilities to service that property. So it gets, and then, then you get into the situation of how the deed was actually written, whether rights to access were transferred or given up from the adjacent parcel. It, it gets very intricate. Generally, if you buy a house next to a way, even if it's a private way, you, and again, generalization, you generally have the rights to use that for access and for utility construction, unless there's something else in the chain of record that prohibits you from using it in general.
Well, we'll see.
Yeah.
Moving right along, subdivision rules, regulations, discussion. I don't know if, if you all remember, hopefully you do. It was quite a few months back, Paul came in and presented. They wanted, they want to get these forms, the INR forms, the, there's some flow charts. They want to get all these onto the town website so they can be downloaded, filled out, and positively even done on PDFs so then they can be emailed in or whatnot. So a lot of these, uh, forms were looked at by our town clerk, Pam Labonte. And I asked Mr. DeViggen also to give his feedback on some of these just because of the nature of his professional career. Has a lot of experience. So for the first one, is the planning So for the first one, is the planning board application fee schedule. Everything basically stayed the same, Paul did some research and got, and he showed us when we saw it the last time. Of what adjoining towns are, are charging, and we're very, we're compatible with all of those. All but one, which we're gonna discuss now, which is the. Form C amendment of subdivision dollars per linear foot, uh, if you all see that. Uh, we have it as ten dollars per linear foot of roadway. Now, Paul did a little bit of research, and we are at ten dollars, New Bedford is at five dollars, Rochester's at two dollars, and Mattapoiset's at one dollar. Pam Labonte says that we've been at ten dollars forever. Do we wanna have discussion on that, um?
My understanding, maybe I'm broken, I don't know if I was wrong, but. Form C amendment to subdivision plan, I'm not so sure that, was that amendment, always been there? I always thought that was a linear footage of fee for the town to take and put in escrow for when the road is built. And then they have money in the, an account for, uh, outside inspections that occur. Not like a fifty-three G account, because, um. I don't know if this has been always like this, that's what I'm saying, it says three twenty twenty-three, so it's updated. I don't remember it being like that, I remember it being like a fee for definitive subdues, which is four hundred plus seventy-five per lot, plus. Ten dollars per linear foot of road, which never made any sense to me, that means if you got a thousand foot of road, you got about ten grand. Your fee's ten grand, it doesn't make any sense, but.
I think that's how I read it here, though.
Form C amendment of subdivision plan, so if you come in to amend the plan, and you got a thousand-foot road, and your amendment is something minor in nature, you gotta pay a ten thousand dollar fee? That doesn't make any sense.
No.
I don't even, I've never understood what that for, the only thing I can think of is that it's for a fifty-three G account. You know, for, uh, inspections of construction.
But even if it were for a fifty-three G account, would you think that ten dollars is a bit excessive?
It is, yes. It should be like a standard minimum fee, um, like, say, two grand. And then if you have an excessive amount of roads, um, you know, spinoffs here and there, and you have, you know, and you. Maybe you have three thousand feet of roads, well then, it should be a plus on top of.
So much, so much per linear foot beyond.
Beyond a certain threshold, yeah.
Threshold, that makes sense, you got a flat, flat fee, flat fee cost, and then beyond that is.
Like, like, you can compare, um, like Joe Costello is building a subdivision, or intends to.
Yeah.
He's got a lot of road there.
Yep.
Versus, um, I don't know, the, the guy over here, DeTerra, that built the road, right?
Yep.
You know, it's, it's a short road, it's like five hundred feet.
Right.
So the fees don't, they might not make sense either for the low end, you know, if you had a hundred foot of road, you put in a cul-de-sac in. Um, it's a thousand bucks, well, maybe it does make sense, you know, I don't, you know, I don't know, but there's a, to me, there's a minimum. But what do we allow for dead-end streets, is it fifteen, it's twenty-five hundred if you have water, right?
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred times ten, someone to put in twenty-five thousand dollars in escrow, for what? Is that a flat, is that a fee, or is that only when they amend this other? This says for amendment.
I mean, it's.
Get better file.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, I'd be interested to see what, I mean, the last two subdivisions that were done, I wasn't here for the, or I. Kept away from the Park Drive one, it'd be interesting to see from what the fees were paid for the Park Drive subdivision and Maniz Estates. Those are, those are probably the last two, I, I'd say, let's start, let's start there, let's see what they, let's see what they did there. I mean, honestly, twenty-five hundred feet of road, I mean, a road probably costs a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars a foot to put in. So the ten dollars a foot is not really, especially if it gets put into a revolving account to pay for engineering services. That's not really that excessive, I mean, and that's not a lot of money compared to what they're gonna have to lay out to build the road.
But it's above, like, twenty-five thousand, that's like, it's so above and beyond, that's the necessity.
Let, let's, let's see, let's see what, uh.
Well, what do you have? Well, I, I answer one question, what is this for, is this just a fee, or is this a, a retainage? For, for completion, I guess.
I just, I think, I believe other towns have it listed, that's the other comparison that should be done.
The other compar- the comparisons that Paul came up with. He asked me to get a range of cost per linear foot of roadway fees for subdivisions. Subdivisions of two engineerings, engineers.
I don't wanna cut.
So, basically, a cushioned is at ten, we're on the highest side, where New Bedford's at five, Rochester's at two dollars, and Mattapoiset's at a dollar. To me, my question in my head is, is why are we double the next closest town? And why are we ten times the amount of Mattapoiset?
I mean, let's, let's see, let's narrow down what it is for, if it goes into that revolving account or not, and. Let's take a look at what was paid for fees for the last two subdivisions that went in. I, I, I do remember more of the Maniz Estate ones, but I don't remember them squawking about the, the subdivision fees.
You may not pay that fee. And it'll be anything in escrow.
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I, I couldn't tell you. I mean, what, what were the, I mean, just the permitting cost for a half a mile of road, that's the twenty-five hundred feet. That's a, that's a very, very substantial number.
Yeah, I would say yes.
I mean, you get through the conservation and the stormwater stuff.
Probably six figures.
I mean, Maniz, Maniz, Maniz Estates, they had to go to, uh, natural heritage, because that was in the. Habitat of some rare and endangered species, so I mean, that, that was a big deal for them, they lost a lot of lots because of that. So I, all, all I'm saying is that, you know, I, let's see what the other two pay for fees. And, you know, when you start looking, especially if that ten dollars a foot is for a revolving account, that they get a refund back, you know, at the end of the, the project. I, it may not be that big of a deal. I, I don't know, who does the, who does the inspections, uh, construction inspections of the roadway now, is it just the?
I think it's Dan.
What's that?
Just Dan.
Dan, I think, Dan Manon.
Okay, I mean, for a while there, we were having, you know, sieve tests and compaction tests and, and stuff like that done, and, and.
It should be, that still should be, that stuff should be done, is a public.
I mean, that, that's, there's a, and, plus they did compaction on the end depths of the pavement that was put in. Cause we caught a couple of, a couple of times where they're trying to get like a quarter inch less of pavement on than the. The two inches that was required, which a quarter inch doesn't sound like much, but it's a lot of tonnage. And, and there's every benefit in the world to shorting on the thickness of the pavement.
Yeah, if you're the installer.
What, what's that?
If you're the installer.
Well, or you're paying the bill for it.
That's what I, that's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
The, the subdivider, exactly.
Okay, um, we'll, we'll come back to, to the fee schedule here. The next set of forms, I don't think there was much of a change to these, I think they, they all basically stayed the same. Which was the, uh, Form A, uh, application, Form, uh, excuse me, Form A one application, Form A two application, and Form J application. Again, Paul went over all these, uh, the last time, if you guys want to look these over, uh, you're more than welcome to, uh, but I don't think there was any change. I think these are just gonna be, um, posted onto the town website as is.
Just, just so to clarify, I went to the Rochester Planning Board Fee Schedule, Form C definitive plan. It, it says here, uh, without a preliminary. They have a, okay, so they have a fee of a hundred fifty bucks per lot, and additional two, and additional two dollars per linear foot of roadway. So it's not for an amendment, that's why I think this is, I don't think this is right, though, I don't think that was the.
It's proba- it's probably a little excessive for an amendment, I mean.
An amendment can't be that, an amendment would standard, be, you can't, you can't charge for an amendment more than what the original.
Yes.
So, 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 with that being said, we're on the low side, we're only at seventy-five dollars a lot, so we have a hundred and fifty dollars a lot. You just said a hundred and fifty bucks a lot, right?
Yeah, so we're half the price.
We're half the price, that's, that being said.
Yeah, preliminary, uh, they, they, the, the fees are different if you file a preliminary, it's like a hundred dol- preliminary form being a hundred dollars per plan. Two fifty submitted with a plan, I'm, I'm having trouble understanding what the heck they're, you know.
You got a preliminary.
But, but the, the per linear foot of roadway is an extra fee, and I'm not sure what they do with it, it doesn't explain that. But I believe that, that, what I'm trying to say is, Form C amendment subdivision plan, I don't think that, I, I don't know where that came from.
Okay.
I don't think that was in the forms in the past, I honestly don't, when you looked up this punch list, I think somehow that appeared. And I think it's, it's a.
I don't ever remember doing an amendment to a subdivision plan, to be quite honest with you. I mean, there might, there might be some re-lotting once in a while because of, uh, percolation tests, but to actually amend the, the, uh, the roadway and the drainage for the roadway.
I'll tell you what, for, for the next discussion, the next meeting, I'll, I have old records that, from the town, from whatever, doing something in ten, twenty years. I'll see if I can find what this fee schedule looked like, to see if I can compare.
And I'll, I'll talk to Pam regarding this, uh, also, um, to see if she can get any insight on what exactly.
What the purpose is of that. I, I believe it's to, it's to, you know, um, to go in escrow, and, uh, and, you know.
And to pay for an engineer to kinda, a separate, a separate engineer to kinda oversee the.
Yeah, I, I remember, um, I don't know if you remember, we did this thing for Steve Gendron. That's where Curly's farm stand is, their road kept going, uh, well, he, he built out the paper street for a cul-de-sac in the field. And he, he, you know, six years went by or something like that, and he sent me a, a text and said, hey, I got a notice from the town. They said they got seven hundred and fifty bucks of my money, and, you know, they asked me if I want it back. He's like, what was that all about? And I think it was a ten dollar per foot, it was like seventy-five feet of a cul-de-sac that he built, something like that, and I was like. I said, oh, that must be that fee that they put in escrow, and they did put it in escrow.
They probably just never used any engineering review or.
So, so when these fees go in, are they, like, we got fiscal twenty twenty-four begins, obviously, in July first for, for the town. Is that what these fees are for, is they listed as fiscal twenty twenty-four, and they need to be reviewed annually to adjust them.
Right.
You know what I mean, instead of sitting inside of a book for, forever, you know, I mean, some of these, this is, was part of the problem, I think it should be listed as.
All right, we will, uh, we're gonna look into that, uh, fee schedule, and, uh, I'll get a little bit more information, we'll table that one for. The future discussion. Uh, we gotta take, I'll take some votes at the end, let me just go through all of these real quick. The next one is, uh. Forms. One A, no, so this is Form B, oh, yeah, yeah, Forms A, B, and C, instructions for, follow it up, that was this one, my apologies, that was this one. And this one's Form A through O. Nothing's changed on most of these, the only one that's, uh, um. Changed is the flow chart for the approval not required under subdivision control law. Dave, myself, and Pam went over this, and, um, kinda made it flow a little bit better, so, uh, if you guys wanna take a look at this. This is also something that Paul went over the last time he was here. The only thing that we need, um, I want, what I'd like to do is have Andy Bobola, our, um. Building inspector, I'd like for him to take a look at this, uh, this other flow chart for property development process, I'd like to get his, uh, opinion on it. It has building permits, earth removal application, um, zoning, it's got all kinds of, it's a different type of flow chart that we had. And, um, I, before we vote on this one, I'd like to get it in front of Andy to, uh, get his, uh, opinion on it. There is also another flow chart, I don't have it with me, it's all scribbled on, uh, the flow chart for the new solar, uh, bylaw. It has to totally be revamped, because the new solar bylaws is basically totally different now. So that one's kind of been put on hold until we get a new town planner for he or she to, um. Attack and, and take care of, so that one's the only one that's gonna be, um. Put on the back burner for now, so, just so I can, I gotta take a couple of votes, so the first one. We're gonna table, which is the revised fee schedule, we'll table that one when I'm gonna vote on that.
Can I make a motion that we table the revised fee schedule till we do a little more research?
We have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fabulous, uh. The next few forms that I talked about, the ones that didn't really have any change, which is Form A, B, and C, the instruction. For, for Form A one, A two, and J, those didn't change, those are gonna be posted on the town website. Can I get a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, uh. The next one. Was Forms A one through O, updated and revision level added. I'm sorry, I wish Paul went over this with me, he, Paul went on vacation, and, uh, we met up briefly on Friday. Last Friday to go over these, and I apologize, but I don't have.
After the, we, we did all forms.
We did, we did all the forms.
You had two.
This is the only one, this, this is the only one I wanna hold, which is, yeah, with input for the building inspector, so, uh. Can I get a motion to approve the flow charts for the property development process? With the, with the input from the building inspector?
Well, I would, I would get, I would make a motion that we solicit. The building inspector's opinion of that particular.
The property development.
For property development.
I'll send a motion.
Okay, uh, we had a second, all in favor?
Aye.
This is the flow chart.
This is the flow chart, sorry.
You want to approve.
This is the flow chart that I wanna approve, uh, yeah, the.
Approval not required.
Approval not required flow chart, can I get a motion to approve the Form A approval not required under subdivision control law flow chart?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good, all right, so we have two that we have on the table, actually, three, cause the, the solar bylaw, uh, flow chart isn't here either. So we'll put that one on the back burner, I don't even have that to vote on.
They've got enough lawyers, let them figure it out.
A little bit more, uh, all right, so, let me just follow this, current plan there, nothing long-range plan, or other business, all right, so, I guess, other business. Something that, um, came to me, which. Uh, two other solar projects, uh, Morse's Lane and, um. Mendel Road, I think it's the Girl Scout camp, I think it is, the one over there.
Oh, okay, yeah, that was a huge one.
That was a huge one, I think it was a five megawatt, um, planned there, um. Special permits expire, one I think is in June, one is in July, they, both projects were recently purchased by new solar companies. And I got a, uh, special FedEx letter for both that they are requesting, um. Two-year extension on their special permit. I was a little vague on the process of, uh, special permit extensions.
Yeah, couldn't tell you.
I was under the impression it was only six months, um, but there is something in the bylaw that says that I've. But there is something in the bylaw that says that, I think, and again, I, I'm sending this to town council to get more clarification. Uh, I think there was something in, uh, the bylaw that says that we can give up to a two-year, uh, extension. They are requesting a two-year extension. Again, I'm just bringing this up to let you know that there are two solar projects that are about to expire shortly, they have reached out to me, uh, regarding an extension. I, uh, requested further, uh, information that I will.
So we will have something for.
I'm hoping to have information, uh, for next meeting.
Okay. We've been always working on the two-year extension.
Have you?
Yes, on all done projects.
Two-year extension.
Extension. I know, because they were coming in front of us, because they were getting ready to expire.
And you, and in the past, prior to me, you, in the past, you were approving an extra two years.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
My question would be to town council, are we obligated to give them an extension?
That's, that's my question.
I don't think we're obligated to give them an extension.
We have a new bylaw, if they don't break ground, so I was not concerned they expire.
That's my question, is, do we have the, uh, authority or the right to grant a six-month? They can be coming in asking for, uh, two-year, and we decide six-month. Let's just say a hypothetical, you have one that has been trying to, uh, break ground, either they're, they're hitting resistance from either a butters or access road to their field. They, they've shown that they've been working to, uh, get going before the end of the permit, but are reaching the end and are asking for extension. That could be something that we look at and say, okay, they've been putting some effort into this in the last two years, do we give them six months, a year, or whatever extension?
Or nothing.
Or nothing.
Yeah.
And then there are those that have had a two-year, uh, permit and have done zero, zilch, nothing, now they're not a set of plans, nothing, and now are coming to us for a whole, another two years. Again, I, I'm requesting from town council what we are authorized to.
Two years, a big window, because a lot can happen in two years, a lot can happen. So, so the other thing is that on those two permits, when were they, when was a special permit issued? Okay, because some of these projects got an automatic extension because of COVID, okay? So they're already.
Yeah, wouldn't factor in. You, in order to have the COVID fifteen-month extension?
Yep.
The permit would have had to be issued before COVID.
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
It's legally, it had to be, because I've looked into this multitude of times. It has to be an active permit when, when the executive order went in play.
An active special permit, or a building permit?
Any permit.
Oh, any permit.
That was in play, whether it's local, state, federal, whatever, in play. Prior to the governor going, you know, his emergency order went into effect. Uh, let's just say it was that issued a month before.
Yeah.
It just got a fifteen-month extension.
Yeah.
Let's say it was due to expire two months after his executive order. That permit doesn't expire, he, he froze the timeline until he lifted the order.
And that's what we were up against, which some of these are already.
None of these would, would factor in. Uh, unless they were issued permits prior to.
Yes, that's, that's actually kind of.
So if they had a two-year extension, the two-year extension would have been within the last two years.
Right.
So I.
It's fifteen months, I refer to it as a two.
That's a good question for town council. If, say they were issued a permit, the initial permit was prior to COVID. And then, so then they expired, let's just say a month prior. So they gave them another fifteen months prior to the, so it was good till twenty twenty-one, they got a, then they got a two-year extension from the board. And it was active, then they get to fifteen months, does it all add it up cumulatively? We need to look at when it was originally, he's right, originally issued.
Issue.
I don't know if, because they then went and got an extension after COVID was lifted, the emergency order was lifted, that, I don't know if I think it's valid, but that's a confusing timeline. Because, but if they were, if literally they have no extensions, and they were, and they were coming up on two years, they're out of luck.
Yeah, I think Doug updated everything, right?
It has to at least have been prior to COVID, and then I don't know if getting an extension after the emergency order effectively gives them, I don't think it does, but that's a tricky thing that we gotta make sure about.
Driving range, we extended, this was the third time, now that they finally did construction.
Which one was three?
The driving range.
Okay.
So.
That came in front of us for an extension, uh, three times.
Right.
And on the third time is now when they, they've done the project.
So they got a permit, they had a two-year permit, they did nothing, two years later.
No, they came in before it expired, to get an extension.
And you gave them two more years.
That's right.
So now we're at four years. And then they, before that one expired, they came back in and you gave it to them again, and then they got six years.
However, though, however, we had never changed, the bylaw was still the same, so there was nothing.
Right, there was no changes, so there's no reason, there's no reason not to deny them.
Yeah.
But now there is a, in fact, voted in a town meeting, new bylaw. Like you said, I would have to hear evidence of what have they been doing, other than selling off to the next guy.
Right.
That's not an activity to me, it's just somebody getting rich and passing it to the next guy, and it's not my problem, but.
Okay, um, I just wanted to make you aware of that one.
Yeah.
Um, I will get more information from town council, and we will discuss.
It's all, I mean, it's almost like each one requires, or requires a town council opinion, to be quite honest with you.
Well, I can tell you that.
Rather than us trying to sort it out. And, and they should, they should have the burden of showing exactly what they've been doing to quote, work on the permit. I mean, a lot of their earlier ones, again, there were two things, one of them, bylaw hadn't changed, and, uh, EverSource was not particularly, uh, quick to approve interconnections.
That's, that's what I think the major problem is, I don't think anybody wants to actually start working on any project until they get the connection approval from EverSource, and then they have like X amount of time to get it done, and that's when their scurry.
And, and on the, I'm, the way I understand the interconnection permits, they can get the right to, uh, to connect, but there's a fee schedule for improvements, so they might get, they might be able to tie in, uh, a half a megawatt for free, or without any additional fee, but if they want a one mega, if they wanna tie in one megawatt worth of panels, there may be improvements that EverSource is requiring to be done before they get to that level. Uh, you know, and then two, three, four, five, you know, whatever the thing is, so I can understand why you would be reluctant to start the project until you knew what the interconnection cost was going to be. And, uh, yeah.
I think it would be helpful if, if you ask Paul simply to, if you know two are coming in, just simply send an email and say, these are the dates when the initial permit was issued. Then we know whether it's pre, post, emergency governor's order. And then, these were the dates that they were granted, what, two-year extensions, I assume? It'd be good to know the information ahead of time, knowing they're coming in for extensions.
So we, we have that spreadsheet, right, Paul's got that spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet was updated, to best of my knowledge, before Doug left.
Right.
Which included, which included this COVID extension period.
I think it included the COVID extension, the other thing that it doesn't say is when it originally was approved. Like, it doesn't say approved on such a, as a date extended.
Whether it was sent once or twice.
That I don't think it says, so, um, but, we'll look at that, and, uh, but it has to be, you know, with all fairness to proponents, we can't drag it out too much longer either, because they're coming up to their final.
They gotta do something.
They gotta do something quick, and they can't lose it because we're dragging our feet, so.
Likewise, if they come in two days before it expires, well, I don't really feel the need to jump in.
Jump the hoops with that, right, no, agreed, all right.
Other business, um, I know we mentioned to bring in, or send an email to the reps for eighty-eight Wing Road.
I don't know if that happened, yeah. I will, uh, Paul, like I said, went on vacation, I don't know if he got around to sending them that, um, that was part of the, um, last meeting that we just signed, but it is something that, um, I will find out if that ever got sent out to the.
Serpent.
Serpent, okay, uh, quick, quick on this, um, as you know, I was asked to, um, be the serpent, um, representative, there's, there's two, usually it's the town planner and the town administrator, uh, Jamie Kelly. But we have a town planner, so they asked me to do it, as we discussed at our last meeting. I have a lot on my plate right now and cannot.
Is, is Jamie still a representative?
Jamie is the representative, and Mr. Boucher, uh, from the kindness of his heart, has volunteered.
Jumped into the deep end, into the muddy deep end.
Volunteered to jump into the deep end, and, uh, he did reach out to some serpent representatives to get a little bit more information, to cover, to cover his behind and find out some more information, you wanna just fill in anything that you might know?
Yeah, the internet just, it's, um, um, I, the, I spoke to Maria Jones from, from Serpent, I guess she's our local contact, um, she has basically requested a preliminary meeting with me, Jamie, and herself, um, to discuss some, to discuss an agenda for the preliminary meeting, um, which they wanna have between the planning board and Board of Selectmen, and possibly, um, the Conservation Commissions, um, to introduce themselves and, um, they've got some updates they want us to do, um, she sent out some sample forms, basically an update that were done back in twenty, I think, I think she had two thousand seven to two thousand thirteen, um, the samples, and they wanted to, um, update those. I'm doing a little bit more looking into that, I still have to sign that agreement.
Yeah.
As the rep.
To be, yeah.
And, um, and I think it needs to go in front of the Board of Selectmen first, um, so, um, which, hopefully at the next meeting, I, you know, I reached out to Jamie, I'm waiting to hear back from him, he's been obviously very busy.
He is, yeah.
Yeah, I spoke to him once, and, and, um, he said, you ready, I said, not until I do a little bit more, um, investigation into this. But it is basically on an interim basis until we get a town planner.
Right.
And may end up as an alternate if need be, um, at some point, the way, um, Maria says, she says a lot of times that the town will have alternates to sit in to cover.
Right.
Most of the meetings are at night, um, I think there's one daytime meeting coming up on the twenty-fourth.
I was wrong, our next meeting is the twenty-fifth, it's not the twenty-fourth.
So, um, I gotta, um, look at that a little bit more, and I, you know, she said that would be a good one to attend to, um, in person, but mostly ninety percent of the other stuff is done, um, later in, later in the day, early evening, via Zoom, so, a little bit more manageable. So.
Technically, we don't need to take a vote on this, uh, but I would like to hear if anybody has any opposition to, uh, Steve being the rep until the town planner is hired, or is everybody a yay for Steve?
No, if he's willing to put the time in, by all means, go for it.
Yeah, I, I don't, and it, and just, you know, it's, I, I just, I don't wanna be Debbie Donna, but I'm just looking at, you know, through the one end, town planners, uh, uh, nobody seems to be jumping at it.
I did talk to Jamie Kelly, I think there were a couple more, um, applications, um, one of them had zero experience, and I think the other two had minimal, um, they haven't started the interview process yet, but, uh, it'll be, it'll be Jamie, uh, myself, uh, I would like Andy Bobola to sit in as well, uh, on interviewing the possible, um, applicants. Oh, and I don't know if you know, if you guys saw the last Selectmen's meeting, they did hire a new clerk for the building inspector. A little bit of municipality experience, had something to do with New Bedford Parking Department, parking tickets or something, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I wasn't involved in that interview process, uh, but they did hire her, uh, so the way it's set is that she's gonna be the building department clerk in, uh, approximately ten hours, if her time will be for the planning board. Paul is working his way out the door, but he has agreed to stay on for a little bit longer to kinda show her the ropes, uh, regarding our department. And, um, I've even maybe talked him into maybe popping in every now and again to kinda help out a little bit until the town planner arrives, and maybe he can, uh, still help out a little bit, we gotta, we gotta look at the logistics of that. But, um, just to give you a little info on, on that part, um, but, um, no actual interviews have been held for town planner, but there is a little nibble at the cracker.
I just wanna say that, um, say this on record, I at least supported the seventy-five figure for an experienced town planner.
Yes.
Not, not somebody, I don't mind another college kid like Doug that'll grow into it, but I didn't support that, that somebody that, that, that could do our, you know, run the gamut with our.
You do support a young college kid, or you don't?
No, no, I would, I, you know, Doug would have grown into it, he was, he's underpaid, and there's a huge gap between what he was getting paid and what we up the figure to try and get a professional.
Right.
So, so there's a happy medium in there, as to, if you go back to a, you know, the young person you wanna groom, but I didn't, I didn't support as a board member, the seventy-five number for somebody with no experience.
Agreed, agreed.
And, and as a DO, I think as a seventy-five DOQ, depending on qualifications, so, I think that's, I was a little concerned about that myself, and I see DOQ at the end of the salary, so I'm assuming it would be adjusted according to experience.
Yes, agree.
Just wanna say ahead of time, huh?
Yeah, no, I.
An about face real fast and.
And, you know, and the other thing is, I mean, if we don't have a whole lot of bites, I mean, can we adjust the hat to turn around and look for somebody who has experience, okay, as a part-timer, pay a fair salary, that would be attractive to somebody that was willing to come in and do nineteen and a half hours a week, and that basically, has been a town planner and just, you know, wants some extra cash. And, 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 you know what I'm saying, and pay them a fair, and pay them a fair that somebody can come in here and just, and it, it's put like clockwork for them, so there's no.
That was my original, you know, and Jamie pushed that, can't find that person, well, you can't, can't find, if you can't find the experienced one, you know, with three years minimum, then maybe you run them side by side, and maybe that one catches first.
Yeah, I think that's.
I, I would suggest if the part-time planner is the root, that there be a certain number of hours on a certain day of the week.
Set days.
Every week, so that if, if anybody, if, if, anybody, that's, exactly, yeah, exactly. You know, if it's four hours every Tuesday afternoon, that's fine, but as long as there's a prescribed time where people can go by and talk to them if they need to.
No, no other way than that.
Agreed, agreed.
I mean, that was part of the problem with the previous plan.
Right.
Is there were no set hours, and it was difficult to get in touch.
Previous with, previous to Doug.
To Doug.
And then like, and I just, just in my own mind, um, looking at what's, you know, what the economy costs of doing, just the cost of living, to turn around to somebody that's retired and saying, okay, now they're getting, you know, this, obviously we all get this cost of living increases, whether, whether we're working or not, and wants to, you know, put a few more years in, you know, and they're already, and we're not covering retirement costs, we're not covering a whole lot of other things. I think it might not be a bad way to, just, just to explore, to see if it's out, to see if it's out there.
It's only been, I, I agree, uh, it's only been out for a short period of time, let's see what we get in the next month or two.
Yeah.
If nothing more comes in, and we know that it's, you know, it's really dry out there, then I totally agree, I, I will talk to, uh, Jamie and, and.
And say run them side by side.
Run them side by side and have, you know, see what we get for bites on that. I'm, I'm not opposed to that. Just for the record, uh, our next meeting is Thursday, May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, you may be running that meeting, because I will not be here on that day. But we also, I also wanna make it public that our, our clerk is on vacation, he gets back only a few days prior to this to get the, um, what you. what you would call it out in time, the agenda out in time. We're gonna, we're gonna look at that. But I know that there's solar projects and whatnot that are time constrained. So we gotta, um, we'll, we'll try to get everything done as best we can. But I like to, what we just were talking about, let everybody know that we are very shorthanded in the planning department. So you have to bear with us.
Perhaps if, if, uh, one of these solar companies submits revised plans, they, they have to submit them to Pam.
Yes.
Maybe you just have Pam give her our emails and she can fan them out to us at least by email. And then we know that they're, if you want full copies, you can go down and get full copy, you know?
Yep, yep.
And then we know in advance and that if somebody, um, like the audience, they, they know to check with her too.
Yes.
So they're, they're gonna check.
Yeah, I mean, somebody from the audience, they might want to take a look. Maybe they've got a specific concern. They would like to take a look at the plan.
It sounds like there's interest there, no question.
Next meeting, Thursday, May twenty-fifth. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.